Good evening, everybody. We'll call the meeting to order at 6:00 P.M. Attendees tonight: Gary Bartel, Deputy Reeve; Derek Bartel, Counselor; LeAnn Hutman, Counselor, attending virtually; Clint Johnson, Counselor; Ken Reader, Counselor; Gail Wagner, Counselor; Trevor Woak, Chief Administrative Officer; Colin Eisner, Foreman; Dale Rose, Building Inspector and Animal Control Officer. Absent with notice, Larry Mahalchak Reeve. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Ken moved. And Gail seconded. All in favor? That is carried. Thanks. I can hear you good, LeAnn, so... Perfect. Okay, everybody have a chance to look at the agenda for this evening. Any additions or deletions?
Yes, can we bring up the shack along the river today?
Okay.
It's not supposed to be there.
Okay.
Can we add that to the agenda?
We sure can, Clint. Whereabouts would we like to add that into...
We could bring it into Administration, or we could do it in Public Works. Probably Public Works is called here because he's got the resources that we have to deploy.
Okay. We'll do it in there then. Okay, and 6.1 then. Building by river, down by the river? Okay.
Did you want a resolution or just a discussion?
Um, just discussion, Clint, more than anything tonight?
I guess we've...
We'll start with discussion then?
Yeah, if you figure out what to deal with then.
Okay, for sure. So we'll add it in with Public Works and Utilities then. And I'll add it on the resolution here then too, right, Trevor?
Yep.
Being it's an addition?
It'll be amended to the agenda, yes, so put it on. Just give it the agenda item number. It will hold off on the resolution, which we may or may not need, but we'll know what's a discussion is going to be.
Right. Anything else in regards to the agenda? Anybody? Okay. Resolution 053-2025. Be it resolved that the meeting agenda for the regular meeting of council on February 4th, 2025 be accepted as amended. And we added the building down by the river for discussion in the Public Works category. Could I have a mover and a seconder, please? Derek moved. LeAnn, seconded. All in favor?
Yep.
That is carried. Okay, the meeting minutes. Everybody have a chance to go through them. It was just the regular meeting of council on February 4th. Anything in there that we have to address, or it all looks... Looks good? LeAnn, did you have anything from the minutes, or it all was...
No, I... Yeah, I didn't see what I could see on my phone here. Everything looked fine.
Okay. Anybody in the room have anything?
I wasn't here last time.
Oh, right.
So I watched the video on the website, and it was very good.
The video?
Yeah, I was impressed.
Okay, good then. Okay, we'll read the resolution then. Resolution 054-2025. Be it resolved that the meeting minutes of the regular meeting of council dated February 4th, 2025 be accepted and approved as presented. Moved by? Derek, seconder? Gail? All in favor?
Yep.
Carried.
It's supposed to be January 21st or February 4th?
21st.
Yep, that was your last meeting.
I think it's February 4th.
Oh, the regular...
Oh, I did, Clint. I'll have to change that here. Thanks for pointing that out. Would you like the resolution read again then? Just for clarity, maybe? I'll just reread it then. Be it resolved that the meeting minutes of the regular meeting of council dated January 21st, 2025 be accepted and approved as presented. Moved by Derek and seconded by Gail. Thank you. Good catch, Clint. Okay. Resolution to go into camera. Oh, I guess I should say we don't have any delegations tonight. Okay, Resolution 055-2025. Be it resolved that pursuant to Section 152, Section 3 of the Municipal Act, council shall meet as a committee of the whole to close the meeting and continue discussion in camera regarding investigation or enforcement of an act or bylaw. Pursuant to Section 83, Section 1, Paragraph D, council members shall keep in confidence a matter discussed at a public closed meeting... A public... Discussed at a meeting closed to the public under subsection 152, Section 3 until the matter is discussed at a meeting conducted in public. Pursuant to Section 94, Section 1, Paragraph H, a council member becomes disqualified for breaching the requirement of confidentiality under Clause 83, Section 1, Paragraph D. Mover and a seconder, please. Derek? Would you like to second it, LeAnn?
Sure.
Okay. All in favor?
Yep.
That is carried. Okay, Resolution 056-2025. Be it resolved that pursuant to Section 152, Section 4 of the Municipal Act, this meeting shall be reopened to the public at 7:44 P.M. Moved by? Derek? Seconded by Ken? All in favor?
Yep.
That is carried. Resolution 057-2025, Swan River Valley Mutual Aid Agreement. I think we will table this until we can have a little bit more information brought forward. Is everybody in agreement with that? Okay. Thank you. Okay, everybody have a chance to go over the crime stats report from our CMP here, dated January 1st to the 31st. Just gonna take a little bit of a look at it here. I never had a chance to go through this particular one. Our, um, attempted break-ins and stuff, Colin, they were reported to the RCMP?
The Excetji Court, that's where I did report the one.
Okay, so that'll show up on next month's report, that particular one then. Just trying to get a handle on here and see a lot of that stuff, how many are... Or relatives, stuff like that. So 25 calls for service in one month, it looks like already. Variety of items. Okay, I will read the resolution. Resolution 058-2025. Be it resolved that the RCMP crime statistics report to council dated January 1st to 31st, 2025 be accepted as presented. Moved by?
Yep.
Okay, I got three here. I'm picking. Clint and LeAnn. All in favor? That is carried. Okay, we have a subdivision to look over here. Pardon me?
Number 6 on the agenda. Public Works.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't wear in Public Works.
Yeah, we're in Public Works. Yep, we're in Public Works. Yeah. Okay. Okay, this is a subdivision here. 5.52 acre parcel. And I just had a question. Being it's a 5.52 acre parcel, what does our bylaw have? Do we have to have, um, special approval for it? I'm not sure if our... Like, we have 60 acres or more need a special approval, and is it anything under 10 or over 10? That was the only concern I had. I'm not sure if we have to have a variance approval on it. The only reason... We can approve it. The only thing, it will come back if they do need a variance down the road. Like, we can approve it tonight. I don't see anything wrong with what they're trying to do in principle. I'm just wondering if it follows our subdivision policy, I guess. Do you remember, LeAnn, what our...
I'm trying to remember, and I thought it was around that, you know, around that under 10, 7, 8. I just... Maybe that's to do with septic or something. I just am not...
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can't remember.
Yeah.
But there is a minimum.
There is, yeah. I guess, um, as far as the subdivision there, I don't see anything wrong with it. It's not going to impact the municipality negatively or anything.
The only question... Only question I had, if you go by the big blue bar underneath, that'd be page 6 then. Page 41 in the bottom right.
Page 41, Ken? Yeah?
Right up at the top, there's nothing checked off for an access. Current access, example driveway or lane.
Oh, okay.
Or if there's no access. Just seemed to me like something should have gotten checked off.
Yep, that box didn't get checked off. There is access from a municipal road, that I do know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sure it has a driveway, too.
It has a driveway, yes. Yes, it does.
On the map, I see it right here. Yep, it's right there.
Right. Yeah, I'm just surprised that that went this far without that box being checked off. Like, come back to us already.
Exactly, so I'm not sure whose responsibility that is to point that out, but...
Uh, looks like Ferris Law did the application for the person, so...
Yeah.
I guess we can just point that out to them then. That it does have municipal road access. Or maybe the reason they didn't here is to, uh, Section 11 to subdivide the existing house and yard site to sell. So there probably were... But it still should have been checked off. Nevertheless, good catch, Ken.
Just a little immediate, since if the quarter had a driveway, I mean, if you got no checked off.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, lots... Okay, so they covered it there then?
They do show a lane in that drawing.
Yeah. We don't have to worry about that, Trevor. Thanks. Good, good. Okay. Anybody see anything that needs discussion on that?
No, I don't think so.
Clint or Derek? Anybody? Okay, I'll read the resolution then. Resolution 059-2025. Be it resolved that the municipality of Minnetonka Bozeman approved the application for subdivision of part of the property southeast quarter, Section 12, 37, 25 West, as described in the Ministry of Municipal and Northern Affairs File Number 4149-25-7846, minor subdivision and its supporting documents. Moved by? Derek? Seconded by? Ken? All in favor?
Yep.
Carried. Financial.
Were we gonna talk about the shack?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Okay, uh, under Public Works, I had a small building on the west side of town here. We're gonna be doing a little bit of, um, I guess, work as far as looking at to that building there and seeing what we can do to deal with the situation. So we'll get Public Works to check into that. We're on to financial. Derek, you did the financial review.
Yep, I did.
Anything that we need to talk about?
I think just that a form of payment number, 13666, but I think it's pegged off there that we gotta check that there. For the right description.
So we'll pull that check. We won't sign it, but we'll inquire further on that one because that has come up before, but we'll do more investigation.
Okay.
Okay, so I will revise the resolution.
Okay. Will you be printing a new one, Trevor?
Yes, we will.
Okay. And we will just wait for that. There you go. Let's see what we have, Trevor.
That number's reduced now, so...
Oh, you got this part in here.
Yeah, I gotcha.
Okay, perfect. Okay, we have the resolution ready to read here then. Resolution 060-2025. Be it resolved that the accounts payable checks 13643 to 13699 in the amount of $107,339.66 excluding check number 13666 in the amount of $1,615.43 be accepted as presented and approved for payment. Moved by? Derek? Would you like to second this one, LeAnn?
Sure.
Oh, okay. I thought we lost you for a minute.
Nope. No, I have the phone with me yet.
Okay, no, thank you. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you.
So if there's no questions?
I was just gonna say. Colin?
I can be confused.
You can. Thanks for being here tonight.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. Okay, resolution... This is for the payroll period now. Resolution 061-2025. Be it resolved that payroll period '02-2025 for the period from January 4th to 17, 2025 in the amount of $27,029.79 be accepted as presented and approved for payment. Any discussion on that? Okay, moved by? Derek? Seconded by? Gail? All in favor?
Yep.
That is carried. Okay, handy van audited reports. So this is something we do every year just for the handy van.
Yep, so, uh, this is...
Did we skip over?
We did, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I might be missing a resolution there.
I'll print one up here just in case.
Yeah, I'm missing 61, Trevor.
It's kind.
Thanks.
There's two 61s on the agenda. Maybe that's the problem. The one we just did for payroll is 61, and then council is also 61.
Okay.
This will be Resolution 62, so...
Well, there is a 62.
There is a 62. That's the... Yeah.
So we'll just let me adjust these numbers here. Give me two seconds. So 61 I have is the payroll. Can I see your payroll one?
I don't, uh...
You just did. You just did.
Hang on. What do they do with that one then? Oh, sorry. That's why I got that up there. Yeah, 61 is payroll.
Okay, 61's payroll.
Can we just make it 70?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna do. I just wanted to make sure I don't use up another number. Give me just two seconds. 61 and 62.
Good, thanks for catching that, guys.
Sorry for the question. The other one I just thought of. That check that we're holding up for Darlene's cleaning.
Yes.
The regular check, does that have to be taken off of the...
No, that one, we'll just hold the check. Like, the check is still approved. We'll just hold it and not give it to her till the start of March.
So we're just gonna go 70 instead of changing the numbers on all of them?
No, I'm just changing one here because we... The RCMP report, we didn't know we'd get until I came in late, late Monday.
Okay.
So we were trying to fit it in because it did come in. So your last one was the, um, council per diems.
Well, that's one I approved was the wages.
61 per payroll, okay.
Payroll.
So your next one will be for the per diems. What resolution number do you have for the per diems?
Uh, I have 061-2025.
You printed resolutions.
I didn't. I didn't have one. That's what my... That was my problem.
So I'll print this one here. So that one's gonna be 62. And the Town of Minnetonka Handy Van Association Audit Statement, what's that number there?
That's 62.
Okay, one second.
I jumped from 61, and the other one just wasn't in there, Trevor.
Okay, one second.
Unless you want me to change them manually for now?
No. I'm almost done.
Okay.
The Immigrant Services one you have is under?
There's no 64, if you want to use 64.
Yeah.
Immigrant Services, 63. There's no 64, yes. Okay.
So we are currently on council per diem at 62?
Yes, that's correct. That's what we should be at.
Okay, so... Okay, so that one's good.
Okay, and do you need a couple of these back now, up to 64?
So, um, the next one should be 63 for the immigrant services.
The handy van one's gonna be...
I have the handy van, yeah.
Yep, 64. So that's basically, that's this resolution here. So if you probably have this handy van, I'll trade you that one for this one.
Okay. I'm still missing one resolution. Still missing 62.
62 is the council per diems?
Yes.
Our sheet 62 is the...
Councils per diems.
There you go. I did print two. Okay, there we go. I think we're good. Okay, I think we're good now. 60, there we are. Okay, the council per diems. I'm going to read a resolution for that. Resolution 062-2025. Be it resolved that the January 2025 council per diems in the amount of $8,422.68 be accepted as presented and approved for payment. Moved by Ken. Seconded by Derek. All in favor? Carried. Okay, we're gonna go ahead to the Northwest Regional Library first now, right, Trevor?
Yeah, that'll work because it's 62.
And then back to the handy van. Okay. There's a request for a thousand dollar donation to the Northwest Regional Immigrant Services, uh, Association. Any discussion on that? Did we do this last year, Trevor? Do you remember?
Yes, we did.
We did. So it's kind of an annual thing, it looks like?
Yep, same memo. I just updated it for this year, but that's pretty much what we approved last year as well.
Okay. Okay, well, I will read the resolution then. Resolution 063-2025. Be it resolved that a donation of $1,000 to the Northwest Regional Immigrant Services Incorporated be approved for payment. Moved by? Moved by? Oh, Gail? Seconded by? Derek? Sorry, I'll get you next one, LeAnn. All in favor? Carried. Okay, the Draft Handy Van Association Financial Statements.
For 23, 2023.
For 2023. So this is something that we do every year?
Yep, every year. They have their own separate financial statements. Um, we were... This is part of our audit catch-up. So we finished 2022 late last year, around Septemberish. We're working at 23. The handy van, as far as transactions complexity is, much smaller than our regular operations, so it's completed faster. So basically, it's here for council review and approval, but this has come from M&amp;P.
Okay. Just wanna maybe pull out of this report... Just wanna maybe pull out of this report. How much do the users actually pay? Where's the budget line, or the audit line for that, Trevor?
I saw it here somewhere. It's a pretty miniscule amount.
$1,725, is that what I'm seeing?
Yeah, 1,725.
Okay.
I remember this was 23, so were we operating, uh, that full year?
We were broke down for part of the year, weren't we?
Which is why that would be lower.
Okay.
It wasn't operating. We were still occurring some costs, but not operating.
Okay, and I guess the year before was a little bit higher, 3240. Okay, just was curious here, being this is the audited statements as far as the actual cash collected. Very low, it looks like. I guess the new fees and services bylaw, when that's in place, will reflect a more current, a little higher number.
It'll go up a little, yes.
Yeah. Any questions in regard to the financial statement? Did you have something, Clint, there? I don't wanna, don't wanna rush anybody, but I'm trying to keep her moving along too, so.
Are we still getting the grant? We're not getting the grant.
No.
No, our ridership is too, too small.
Our ridership has declined too much, like Trevor said, so we're not eligible. And I don't, I don't anticipate the ridership going up, so that grant is likely not coming back to us, I wouldn't think.
I don't think so.
Yeah. So that's gonna put, uh, you know, a little more municipal dollars have to go into the handy van if we keep her, want to keep her running then, so. Anything, Derek, Gail, Clint? Ken, I don't wanna leave you out. Leanne? Any questions in the handy van report?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, I'm gonna read the resolution then. Resolution 064-2025. Be resolved that the draft 2023 audited financial statements for the RM and Town of Minnetonahas Handy Van Association, prepared by Myers Norris Penny LLP, be accepted and approved as presented. You wanna move this one, Leanne? Okay, Leanne moved. Seconded by Clint. All in favor? Carried. I always wait for, to hear from you, Leanne, to see if you're in favor or not. Thank you. Swan Valley Planning District Development Plan. Well, I'll tell you what I think. I need some help understanding this thing, is what my thoughts are on this plan here. And I'd like to have maybe, uh, somebody from the district or somebody that helped develop the plan explain it to me in a little bit more detail, because I'm really lost in deciphering through this myself. What-
Really, the longer I look at it, the more confused I get. The numbers don't seem to add up.
Okay. Clint, okay?
Yeah, I think we gotta get someone, because the boundaries and stuff just aren't where they should be.
Gail?
Yeah? If you guys can't figure something, you've been on council for a long time.
I've been trying, uh, trying, going away from it, coming back, and it just isn't working for me. Leanne?
I agree. It's very confusing.
Okay, so maybe we will table this for today and then reach out to the, uh, the people that, uh, at the district and see where we can go from there then. If everybody's fine with that. Okay. Travel policy. Did you wanna recap any highlights on this, Trevor, or?
Uh, well, council, um, previously had talked about some changes to rates and, uh, basically, we understood that uh, some of our rates needed to be, need to update when we compared to what the actual Government of Canada was actually charging. So we basically went in and thought, since we're doing it, we may as well do it as a policy update or a policy renewal. And what this has now been the case is we've, uh, developed a new policy. And this policy is recommended to council, uh, retroactive to January 1st because it reflects, uh, Government of Canada rates in travel per diems, as well as, um, kilometer mileage, as well as the, let's see here, we've got kilometers, give me one moment. For meal allowances and mi- uh, mileage, we are quoting off the Government of Canada, uh, website rates. As well as other items, we are actually putting down, uh, requirements for people who are doing claims for travel. So the policy, pretty comprehensive. It speaks for itself as far as, uh, different categories of travel, but it's, um, three-page document, and the idea is to basically set a standard as far as expense claims, how employees can, uh, what they can actually apply for.
Right, what's allowed and what's not, yeah, okay. And being it's a policy, it can be changed at any time very easily.
Yeah, it's a policy. It's not a bylaw. It doesn't require three readings, just approval through resolution.
Okay. Anybody have anything they'd like to, uh, add or take away or discuss on this policy?
Question.
Gail?
Sorry, under, um, on page two, under meals, on D, it says hotels as part of a hotel room rate, hoses or any other for life. Is that supposed to say houses or?
Uh, probably houses. Uh, let me just, uh-
I just wasn't sure, so.
I think that's, uh, should be hosts, H-O-S-T-S.
Right. Okay, yeah, so if it's part of the event where there, that's part of your registration fee, then you're not eligible to claim, which makes sense, yes. Okay. So that'll cover off our, yeah, our travel and our meal reimbursement if we're out of town or, or traveling anywhere in the municipality as well, so.
Yeah, and it's a cover for both council members as well as employees, so it's comprehensive.
It's right across, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, resolution 066-2025. Be resolved that policy 202501, travel policy be accepted and approved as presented. Moved by? Derek, seconder? Gail? All in favor?
Yeah.
Carried.
As amended, we made that one small change.
Oh, right, okay. As amended. That, be it resolved that the policy 202501, travel policy be accepted and approved as amended, because we had that, uh, clarification in that one paragraph. Okay. Do we have to go into camera for anything yet, or?
Uh, we do for, um-
An item or two yet?
Yeah, we have a few items.
Okay, yeah. Okay, I'll read this long resolution now. Resolution 067-2025. Be resolved that pursuant to section, uh, 152.3 of the Municipal Act, despite subsections 1 and 2, council shall meet as a committee of the whole to close a meeting and continue discussion in camera regarding employee land legal and matter that is in its preliminary stages and respecting, with permission, with, uh, discussion in public with prejudice the municipality of Minnetonahas Bozeman's ability to carry out its activities or negotiations. Pursuant to section 83, section 1, paragraph D, council members shall keep in confidence a matter discussed at a meeting disclosed to the public under subsection 152.3 until the matter is discussed at a meeting conducted in public. Pursuant to section 94.1, paragraph H, a council member becomes disqualified for breaching the requirement of confidentiality under clause 83, section 1, paragraph D. At 816, we'll be going into camera? Could I have a mover and a seconder? Derek, moved. Ken, seconded. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Okay, resolution 068-2025. Be it resolved that pursuant to section 152, section 4 of the Municipal Act, this meeting shall be open to the public at 9:00 PM. Moved by? Clint, Dan, Derek, all in favor? Carried, carried. Okay, and the resolution for adjournment, resolution 069-2025. Be resolved that this regular meeting of council be adjourned at 9:00 PM. Moved by Leanne, seconded by Gail. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.